Okay, we're all set here. This is the common council meeting to be held on Tuesday, April 19th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. The meeting is called to order. Would you please call the roll?
Hold on one second. Technology is slow. Alderperson Collins?
Present.
Alderperson Bailey?
Present.
Alderperson Castner is excused. Alderperson Akers?
Present.
Alderperson Sarian?
Present.
Item B is opening prayer. We have Pastor Rogers here. Amen. Would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving along, I entertain a motion to approve item D, the minutes from the April 6, 2022 meeting. Entertain a motion to do that.
I move for...
Motion by Alderperson Sarian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderperson Akers, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion...
I abstain.
Okay. Alderperson Council stands, motion carries three to nothing. Three to zero. Mayor's report, I don't have one this evening. We have three public hearings, so I'd kind of like to get moving along. Item F is automatic reports. Are there any?
Nope, but I have an announcement.
What's the announcement?
A reminder that May 1st is the first farmer's market.
Awesome.
And just want to report too that the... Whoops. That the voting went very well, and I am very pleased that the Clerk's Department is looking at getting all the chiefs together, getting ideas, trying to make things move flow or be smooth, and just picking everybody's brain what we should do. I like that, working together as a team. And many people at the first meeting that we had felt the same way, very impressed.
Agreed.
Great job.
H citizen commentary, is anyone here to speak on any specific item or just to speak generally? I see one person. I know what they're here for. Okay. All right, let's move ahead to item I, public hearings. The first one is I-1 is a public hearing on a special use permit for Melton Dip to propose a restaurant to be located at 7820 West Layton... Yes, West Layton Avenue, submitted by Ahmad Nadi, hope I pronounced that right, doing business ETN Engineering, and Jafar Jaraba doing business as Melton Dip. This would be to approve the resolution for a special use permit as well as to approve the site plan. Kristi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Melton Dip is a restaurant that is applying to go into the strip mall where Panera is on Layton Avenue, property zone C4, which permits full-service restaurants as a special use. They will provide sweets and desserts. They have a five-year lease and will occupy about 2,200 square feet. Their hours of operation would be 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM daily. Regarding parking, we always just analyze the parking situation. 198 spaces are required for the, all of the uses on site. 139 are provided. Don't foresee any issues with this addition to the strip mall. Regarding site conditions, staff just recognized that there's some repair and replacements of the refuse enclosures in the back, and the planning commission asks that they be repaired by June and outdoor storage be removed from the site. The planning commission recommended approval, and we've received no letters of objection to date.
It's not where Panera is, it's near Panera. It's not in the stall, in the space that Panera is.
Right.
Right, I just, okay.
It sounded like you were saying it was in Panera's place.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, it's okay.
I didn't mean to make it sound that way.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Is there anyone that would like to speak for, against, or for informational purposes concerning this item? Are you the applicant?
Yeah.
So if you don't say anything, I bet you it passes without any consideration whatsoever. Is that all right?
But I wouldn't mind hearing from her, that's okay.
If you want to say something...
If you want to say something, you can say.
Feel free.
But do you have another restaurant? Is this your first one?
Well, she should go up to the microphone then.
Can she go?
Awesome. Okay. Would you... Anyone else like to speak for, against, or for informational purposes concerning this item? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Alderperson Akers, is there a second? Thank you, Alderperson Collins, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the special use permit for Melton Dip as well as approve the site plan review as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Alderperson Collins to do that.
Second.
Thank you, Alderperson Bailey, would you please call?
Alderperson Collins?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Okay, all good. So don't forget you need permits and all that stuff.
Yeah.
Just sometimes people think that this, right? So work with Kristi, and she'll hook you up with everything you need. All right? All right, thank you. Okay, item two, I-2 is a public hearing on a special use permit for a beer store within the hometown gas station, existing business located 53, 52, 35 West Loomis Road, submitted by Khadisa Amiot, I hope I pronounced that properly, doing business as Hasham Petroleum, LLC. This is to approve the resolution for the special use permit as well as the site plan review for this location. Kristi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hometown gas station and convenience store are, they're proposing to add a Class A liquor license to sell malt beverage, malt-based beverages. Its zoning is C3, which does allow that service to be offered to their patrons with a special use permit. The location previously did have a Class A liquor license, but the license has not been renewed for a number of years. The only thing that staff noticed on site, it's in good condition, is we have an approved site plan from many years ago, but it's not matching the conditions of what's out there as far as parking layout. So we did ask that they just get us a revised site plan, so that's accurate, what we have on files, accurate by June. The site did have quite a bit of outdoor storage, which has been cleaned up since we reviewed the site. Planning commission recommended that they clean up the fence, you can see in the middle picture, repaint it. Otherwise, planning commission recommended approval, and we've received no letters of objection to date.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak for, against, or for informational purposes concerning this? Is there anyone that would like to speak for, against, or for informational purposes concerning this? The record should reflect that this gas station had previously sold beer, previous operators. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
I will second.
Aye, Alderperson Akers, second by Alderperson Collins, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Entertain a motion to approve the special use permit as well as the site plan review as presented.
I move for approval.
Motion by Alderperson Sarian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderperson Collins, would you please call?
Alderperson Collins?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
Aye.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Okay. Item I-3 is a public hearing on a special use permit to establish an alcohol beverage drinking place at Bloomell's Garden and Landscape Center, an existing business at 4930 West Loomis submitted by John Lewandowski and Mike Bloomell doing business as Bloomell's Garden and Landscape Center. This would be to approve a resolution for the public use per, the special use permit, excuse me, to establish that beverage drinking place as well as a site plan review for the Garden and Landscape Center. Kristi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oops. What they're proposing to do is offer a full liquor license to their patrons and guests of the Bloomell's Garden Center, which also has a coffee shop. Their hours would be seven to 10, Monday through Saturday, and eight to seven on Sundays for the liquor uses. They do expect to add another six employees with this proposed use. All coffee shop staff will obtain a Wisconsin bartender license, and they will have prominent "No alcohol beyond this point" signs, which follows the liquor license that is also on the agenda this evening. We did receive a full site plan showing existing conditions of the entire property. Total parking for, is required is 188. They are providing 207, so they're completely fine on parking. We did notice the parking lot, the first parking lot off to the west when you enter the site is in need of repair, and planning commission requested it be resurfaced by the end of 2023. Planning commission recommended approval, and we've received no letters of objection to date.
Okay, thank you. Just to be clear, the definition of the premises as is described on your graphic, where liquor and beer can be sold, right? Served. That's really, really important that you do that, right? Okay. Is anyone here to speak for, against? Go ahead. What?
About the liquor, the premises.
The defining of the premises, where you... Where you can, where you can serve it and, right. It was on your little picture. You can't have people wandering around your parking lot. That'll get you in trouble. Or getting gravel while they have a beer in their hand. That kind of stuff, right?
There's a playground now, too.
There's a playground there, too. Probably shouldn't have them playing. That's your, that's, that's your call, all right?
No, but it's a very nice area, because I know I would go there in summer for the coffee and sit outside. It's just, and I'd like to have my meetings there. But very nice, I think.
Will you be serving?
Now, some people might pay for that.
I have a question as far as, I don't understand the concept. Is it going to be in the coffee shop?
It's going to be in the coffee shop with an outdoor patio, if you look on the picture on your screen right there.
Yeah.
So the, I think this, the, and you can speak to this if you'd like to. The alcohol will be allowed where the red lines are. There's an outdoor patio where people can sit and consume coffee or alcohol probably, and it's also within the coffee shop. I'm not convinced that they're trying to turn it into necessarily a bar with pool tables and things like that. Other coff, Starbucks is doing this nationwide in some select locations where they're serving wine and beer and alcohol in some of their bigger markets, so...
They're not coming to Greenfield with that, are they?
I don't think so.
I hope not.
They were talking about it like three or four years, four or five years ago, they were looking at the one at Cops.
Okay, I'm talking about the one on Loomis and Layton.
No, they're not. No, that would be bad.
Please no. That would not, no, it's already bad enough there. We don't need anymore.
They were talking about their cafe places and the ones without drive-throughs back then, as I recall.
Okay.
But that was a long time ago. So, does that make sense, Bruce? Yeah? Question answered.
No. I'll make a motion.
We have to close.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, sorry.
Does anyone want to speak for, against, or for informational purposes concerning this item? Is anyone here to speak for, against, or for informational purposes concerning this item, other than the applicants which are here in person? I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Alderperson Collins to close the public hearing, is there a second? Second by Alderperson Akers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the special use permit as presented as well as a site plan review for Bloomell's Garden and Landscape Center.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Alderperson Collins to affirmatively for those things.
Yes.
Second by Alderperson Akers, would you please call?
Alderperson Collins?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey? Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
I want to thank Bloomell's, too, for all the things that they do for the city, whether it was the moving wall or things that we do at the AMP or in Conkle Park. They've always been there as a great corporate citizen for Greenfield, even though their address says Greendale. It's not your fault. It's not your fault, I know, it's the post office.
Did you want to take their other item?
We can move ahead, too, to item... Is that K-5?
J-1?
Yep, K-5.
We'll move ahead to item K-5, which is to approve the application for a 2021, 2022 Class B beer and liquor license for Bloomell's Foreign Garden Center, John Lewandowski, agent for the property located 4930 West Loomis Road. All alcohol will be served, sold, served, and consumed in the 1,500-square-foot plus or minus indoor coffee shop space and roughly 3,000-square-foot outdoor patio space located 4930 West Loomis Road. All alcohol will be stored in a locked closet located in the coffee shop, and all records will be kept in the main office next to the coffee shop. Entertain a motion to approve that application?
So moved.
Motion by Alderperson Akers, is there a second? Second by Alderperson Sarian, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. I think that's it for them, right?
That should be it.
All right, welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Looking forward to it.
Are they open tonight? All right, just, just... Thank you, appreciate it.
Just had a meeting there, too.
Okay, let's see, we're, public hearings are behind us?
Yes.
Kristi, do you have anything else? Well, you have planning commission stuff, yeah, I'm sorry, sorry. Sorry. Old business, I don't have an appointment for the Board of Health or the Board of Review. I do have an alternate member for the Planning Commission, Danielle Wojak, W-O-J-A-K, 7130 West Carpenter. I think that's Alderperson Bailey's district, 71st and Carpenter? Danielle is one of the moderators on the Greenfield Facebook page and is of strong interest in the community and is well-versed in what's going on here. So I would make that appointment, and even though I don't think I have to confirm it, I would like to entertain a motion to confirm that appointment.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Alderperson Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderperson Sarian, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, good, now we're in K, I think, right? Yep, okay.
K-1, yep.
K... K-1, appointment of a common council president for a one-year term. It's currently Alderperson Sarian.
I'll nominate Alderperson Sarian again.
I will second.
Are there any other nominations? The nomination was for Alderperson Sarian, I'd entertain, go ahead.
I'll nominate Carl Castner.
Okay. Okay, so the, are any, are there any other nominations? Okay, nominations are closed. We'll take the first one first, the first nomination. I entertain a motion to approve the nomination of Alderperson Sarian as council president.
I'll make that motion.
And I will second.
Motion by Alderperson Akers, second by Alderperson Collins, is there any further discussion? Would you call?
Alderperson Collins?
Aye.
Alderperson Bailey?
No.
Alderperson Akers?
Aye.
Alderperson Sarian?
Aye.
Motion carries, and because it carried, the second nomination isn't voted on.
Right, and then can I change my vote to make it unanimous?
You can do that. I, I'd entertain a motion to reconsider.
So moved.
Motion by Alderperson Akers to reconsider, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderperson Collins, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. On the original motion to be reconsidered, Alderperson Sarian's nomination for council president. Entertain a motion...
I'll make the motion to...
To affirm, I think it is. By Akers, second by Collins.
And the motion to affirm.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously on this, on this second vote. Okay, there we go. All right. With regard to item K-2A, these are council appointments to the Finance and Human Resources Committee, the Legislative Committee, the Park and Rec Board, and one member to the Planning Commission. Someone sent an email to me directly saying, I just want to do what we have, and if you want to do that, I can expedite that by just saying I'd entertain a motion to approve the existing memberships on the council-appointed boards and committees. Is there a motion to do that?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderperson Bailey, is there a second? By Alderperson Akers? So that would, just for the record, that would mean that Sarian, Bailey, and Castner would continue in the Finance and Human Resources Committee, Collins, Bailey, and Sarian would commit, would continue in the Legislative Committee, Collins would continue on the Park and Rec Board, and Castner could continue on the Planning Commission. That's what everyone agrees to?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. With regard to item K-2B, mayor appointments confirmed by council, I would reappoint unless someone doesn't want to be on one of these committees, the existing membership to the Board of Health, Tree Commission, Public Library Board, and Board of Public Works. And I would entertain a motion to confirm that.
I'll make a motion to confirm.
Motion by Alderperson Collins, second by Alderperson Akers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So Akers will continue to be on the Board of Health, Bailey will continue to give us riveting reports from the Tree Commission. Sarian will...
All right.
Sarian will continue to be on the Board of Public Library Board, and Akers, Bailey, and Collins will continue to be on the Board of Public Works. So remember, at some of these committees, you will, the issue of chairmanship comes up, so on the next, right, for a finance committee under yours, every year you're supposed to kind of go through that, and then when it goes to the Board of Public Works and the Legislative Committee, those are two that you'd have to vote for chairman. Okay? If you want to, if you forget to do it and it doesn't get agendted, it continues to go as it is until you change it. Okay. Three appointments to various committees and commissions. I note that item 3A1 is Mr. John Graber, Board of Public Works, for a term to expire 5/1 of 24. Do you want to reappoint him?
I'll make a motion to reappoint.
By Alderperson Collins, second by Alderperson Akers, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. It doesn't really require confirmation, but it's obvious. With regard to item 3B1, little one, little I, sorry, double little I, triple little I. I'm just making sure that, and four, I would reappoint everyone except on the zoning board of appeals, right? Because that, isn't that person... I would reappoint, reappoint all the existing members that are actively serving on those committees and commissions.
Motion to confirm.
Motion by Akers to confirm, is there a second?
Second.
By Sarian, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C is mayor appointments, two term, it should be two members to the Planning Commission, not alternate members. I would appoint, reappoint Steve Rogers and Donald Carlson in those positions. Entertain a motion to confirm that by Sarian?
Second.
Second by Bailey, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So the designation of the chairperson of the zoning board of appeals is currently Audrey Ellison. She's having some, I don't know, health. I would like to appoint David Schills as the chair. He's expressed an interest in doing it. I would hope, if Audrey wants to continue in that capacity, I think at one point she's, and I can't remember, I think she said that she needed to slow down a little bit with some of this stuff. In the event that she would like to continue in her role as chairperson, I would certainly be open to that, and I'm sure Mr. Schills is, is only trying to help. He's not trying to take the position from her.
I thought they'd make that appointment at their boards.
No, I designate that, I guess.
Okay.
I don't know why that is.
All right. I learned something, thank you.
Do you need a motion to confirm, Dave?
It's just the pure power that I have as mayor to designate the zoning board of appeals person is just...
Do you want us to confirm or not?
Yeah, if we could.
I'll make a motion to confirm, Dave.
By Alderperson Akers, second by Alderperson Collins, and if you can put something in the minutes, it reflects that this is, okay, that would be helpful. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, just one point of information. David Sherbarth called me today, and he's interested in serving on a committee. So if something opens up, he would like to be considered.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
We have no openings right now.
We have an opening on the Board of Appeals, I mean...
Board of Review, you have one, too.
And the Board of Review.
Board of Health?
Let's, since, let's just make sure that he wants to, I mean, there are some committees that are, I don't know. Let's ask him if he wants to sit on either of those, and then the next agenda, we can...
He expressed, expressed a concern, interest in the Pub, Board of Public Works, but that's already, we already, John Graber, who's doing a fine job.
He is, absolutely.
And the Tree Commission.
We would certainly consider Mr. Sherbarth, who's given us long years of service to the committee.
Excellent alderman.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So we'll keep his, you know...
Yep, absolutely. No, that's, it's really good to know. Item, let's see, K-4 is approve applications for 21, 22 operator licenses. Entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Alderperson Collins, is there a second?
Second.
By Alderperson Akers, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We've already done item K-5. Okay, item 6 is Classic Lanes on, at 5404 West Layton, is looking for an extension of licensed premises to our outdoor patio enclosed area on the southeast side with planters. It's approximately 882 square feet from May 2nd to October 2nd. This is sort of a holdover from the COVID restrictions. A lot of folks liked to be outside.
Is that over by the fire department side, right?
It's sort of in the, yeah, it kind of is, but it's sort of in the front, right?
Okay.
Same, same as last year, if you remember where that was?
Yeah, in front.
I drove by it, but I didn't always look that way.
Yeah, I, I went to one a couple of years ago, it was in front.
So I'd entertain a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Motion second.
Okay.
I think it was by Akers, it's her district, second by Collins, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, so items 7, 8, 9, 10 are from the last Planning Commission meeting. They include approving site and landscaping and architectural plans for Rose &amp; Hyundai, a special use review for the Arby's, which is under new ownership, special use and site plan review for Arby's, which is under new ownership, and a special use review and site plan reviews for Sauce and Toss, which is on Loomis. I entertain a motion to approve those four items, 7, 8, 9, and 10.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Alderperson Collins, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Alderperson Bailey?
I have a question, what are, what is that, plans for Arby's?
There's nothing that they're doing to the building, it's just a new owner, and every time there's a change in ownership, we look at things. And every time there's a change in ownership, we look at things. Okay, the Sauce and Toss was the Chicken Place on Loomis. Originally he was talking about converting it to a liquor store and convenience store, but he withdrew that plan and is going to continue with the restaurant.
Great, prefer that.
Okay, could you call on that one?
Elder Person Collins?
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey?
Aye.
Elder Person Acres?
Aye.
Elder Person Sarian?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Item eleven is approve the outdoor special event application for Dan Jansen Family Fest, located at Conkle Park between May twenty-sixth and May thirtieth. Waive all application fees. Application includes a combination of licenses and permits, including but not necessarily limited to outdoor special event, temporary operator licenses, temporary Class B retailer license for beer, food and commercial building, electrical plumbing. Requesting council approval incorporated in this to allow unaccompanied, underage individuals on the licensed beer premises pursuant to Wisconsin statutes one twenty-five point oh seven, parent three, parent A twelve. I entertain a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve.
I will second.
By the person Acres, second by the person Collins.
Can I just ask, I see the applicant here, I was just curious, are we going to have rides this year or not? Sure.
Just a second, just make sure.
Oh, great.
So they will be pulling in on that Sunday, but we do know what to tell them. Not to come till after the farmer's market. We also have a pancake breakfast, that's gonna, all the proceeds are going to the Police and Fire Department.
Is that gonna be on a certain day or?
On Saturday morning, from eight to eleven. So that's something new we have this year. We have a couple new vendors.
Great.
Home Depot's coming back for their.
That's awesome, right? That's good, that's good, that was popular.
We've packed it this year, Dale's not happy, but.
Just one quickie, so last year, or maybe it was the year before, the Co-iki Car Show and your car show was on the same day?
That was last year, we were not doing that, we, we're still.
It'd be cool if you had one each day, if you did, you know, one, one day and they did the other one, but.
Yeah, our, we've always, they've always done Saturday, we've done Sunday. And the normal group that did it for us didn't want to do it last year because of COVID, they're still concerned. They didn't want to come back again this year. Last year we didn't know that the gentleman that we got for it was going to do it Saturday. We kept telling him Sunday and all of a sudden everyone was showing up on Saturday.
Okay.
So we.
Just worry about that conflict, so even if you, if you do it, don't, maybe don't do it on the same day that Co-iki does.
And that's always why we've done it on Sunday, is just out of respect for them.
Right.
You know, like let them have their day and we have our day.
That's cool.
But yes, I think it's more going to be a truck thing this year on Sunday, like old Jeeps and trucks and stuff like that.
Cool.
So that's on Sunday, it's not on Saturday, Saturday's the pancake breakfast.
Where is that going to be? Under the tent or?
Mm-hmm, yep, there's a company that'll come and they can do ninety-six pancakes in five minutes they can make.
I think I should send my thirteen-year-old over there, he likes, he likes to make pancakes, so I'll send him over there to help, okay?
If he would like to come and help me pour juice at seven, at eight in the morning, I'd be very excited for that.
And just want to thank you and your entire crew, thank you for everything that you do. I mean especially it, it's all volunteer and the money is donated and God bless you guys, thank you.
Oh, one more question, no helicopters this year, right?
No.
No, that thing freaked me out, I was always afraid it was gonna crash.
Well, I would circle my house.
I did not like that, so, no.
He came searching for a hat in my yard one year.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they lost it in the helicopter.
No, that'll never.
It's been over ten or fifteen years.
Yeah, it's been a while, yeah.
Okay, motion was made and seconded, all in fa, was it made?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item twelve is an outdoor special event for the Cruising Car Show to be located at Co-iki Park on May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, waiving all application fees, including the various licenses and permits as required. Entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by the person Collins, is there a second?
Second.
By the person Acres, last year's show was really good there.
Even though they got competition from Conkle, huh?
I only got to see it for a short time, but it was really, really well attended, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Just go quickly, we're waiving fees because.
They donate, the Lions Club donates all this stuff back to the community and, yeah, the Lions, the Lions Club runs it.
Okay.
And they put their money back into the park.
Okay.
Awesome.
Makes sense.
Fourteen.
Thirteen, right?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, sorry, I can't count. Long day.
I've just seen, is that the only one? Yeah, okay. Item thirteen is an outdoor special event application in the House of Harley, music series opener to be located sixty-two twenty-one West Layton on May twenty-eighth. Includes combination of licenses, permits, outdoor special event, temporary Class B retailers, licensed beer, food, commercial building, electrical and plumbing. Again, requesting the unaccompanied, underage individuals in the premises language. This is an outdoor event.
And what, on what day is the twenty?
May twenty-eighth.
And so that's the same time as Dan Jansen Fest is going on, that's probably not the best of days.
What are the hours?
It's gonna be at night, I'm sure. There is?
What time?
Did you want to speak to it? Do you want to come up there?
Good, good.
Good evening, council, Mark McLean, House of Harley, six-two-two-one West Layton Avenue, Greenfield. The hours will be twelve to three for music and I believe the Class B license is eleven till four.
So it's an afternoon event, it's on a, it?
Afternoon event, we close at four P M.
That's the doo-wop daddy's time?
What's that?
Who does it then, three to, not you, huh?
Oh, that's.
I mean, the night is the big one.
Yeah.
So, okay.
That's when it starts getting crazy and if we have both events going on at night, that's kind of.
We will not, we will be home.
I'm a hundred percent behind.
Or you'll be at Conkle Park, right?
Could actually, could actually feel traffic. It could actually fuel you guys, right? It could fuel your.
Yeah, so, okay.
Cool.
There's motorcycle parking right by the pancakes.
I'd entertain a mo, motion to approve by Sarian, second by Collins, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Oh, sorry, three to one? Or is it two to two?
Three to one.
Three to one.
You voted in favor?
I, yeah.
Okay.
They're done by four o'clock.
Okay, alright, three to one in favor, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't. It was almost an historic moment when I had access, my, my.
Oh, do you want me to change my voice?
No. Would have been the third time I ever voted.
I thought you might have to vote.
I was kind of sweating. Alright, let's see. Item fourteen is approve an outdoor special event application from Salvation Army in outdoor worship service located twenty-nine hundred West Cold Spring on Sundays during the summer. And waive all application fees. Application includes a following combination, it's an outdoor special event, essentially they're having church services outside.
What about the, I'm kind of curious about the neighbors adjacent to that property.
Really isn't anybody.
There's people there, there's homes on Cold Spring. One side there's not, but the other side there is.
Yeah.
Where their parking lot is.
They've lived there for a long time.
Yeah. I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but.
Yeah.
I'm just a little concerned.
I know, it's our firefighters, firefighters' parents. I can't think of the last.
I have a feeling the neighbors would be okay, but I'm wondering would the neighbors.
Ten thirty A M to twelve thirty P M.
Yeah.
Do you want to hold it and talk to them? I mean, the next four items are all Salvation Army related, or three items. Do you want to hold this until our next common council meeting, which would still give us time before any of this would happen?
I mean, I don't know that I have problems with the other things, I mean, family night.
Is a room sale.
School supply. Ten A M to noon?
Ten thirty to twelve thirty.
Okay, sorry.
For most people that would be okay, but I'm just.
We can wait to see if there are any complaints af, you know, after it happens to.
Well, I mean, it's all summer, so that's, I'm, you know, curious to, you know, I don't know that I want to give free rein all summer if there's going to be problems.
Do you want to talk to them about it beforehand to see how they're, I don't know, what?
I'm not on the, I'm not on the advisory council.
No, I'm looking through.
There was no site plan provided or anything, they just filled out that they wanted to be outside.
I can pull them, a map out, if that's helpful.
Yeah, I, I know exactly who's next door.
Yeah, unfortunately I don't have a, oh, I do have a map, hold on. Oh, okay, so.
Because, yeah, you've got houses across the street and next to it.
Okay, so they're gonna have a.
That's where they have the garden, I think, where your arrow is? Yeah.
Yes, yeah, a canopy, approximately here. And then they do show the speakers being on the east side of the canopy.
So they would be aimed at the.
By the neighbor.
Yeah, but it's going to be aimed at the neighbor, right?
The neighbor's twenty-nine hundred.
Wait, this is, oh, they have, okay, they had north on the bottom, I'm sorry. Let me explain that over again.
Okay.
So they have the canopy here and they have the speakers on the south side, a speaker here and a speaker here towards Cold, well, I don't know if they're facing Cold Spring, probably not, but on the south side of the, hyperlink here, on the south side of the canopy. And it's above this walking path here, so right here is literally the tents and speaker here and speaker here.
Okay.
So they're going north with it?
Yeah.
But it depends.
You're right, the sound would be amplified towards the north.
Yeah, it just, but it also depends on, you know, when, you know, the amp is not aimed at my house, but trust me, I hear it, Scott. He's not paying attention.
Yeah, well, there's a difference between that kind of, I mean, the volume.
It's not just that, it's also the talking, you know, when they would have the fireman's challenge across the street at Conkle Park, that was not pleasant to always listen to.
But you know what, this, I remember the system that they had when we.
It wasn't obnoxious, I didn't.
No, and it's not very loved, they don't have a very expensive.
And we were actually facing Cold Spring when we did that.
Bad.
I mean, is there something that we can approve it contingent that, you know, if there's some complaints that we can revisit it or something like that?
Every Sunday from May twenty-ninth to July first. And then they'll have to come back, if there's problems then we.
Yeah, we'll address it.
So why don't we try for the month, why don't we try for the month, try for the month of June? And if there aren't any complaints, then we can extend it.
Right. Make that, can we make a motion that?
Because they're gonna be.
Approving it through the month of June and then if there are no complaints.
It's up to you guys, whatever you want to do.
I just, I'm not opposed to it, it just, if there's any issues, I want us to be able to address it. Good.
Okay, so what do you want to do?
Okay, with doing, you know.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we approve the outdoor worship service every Sunday through, from May twenty-ninth through the end of June.
And then, and then review.
So that would, that would be June fifth, twelfth, nineteenth and twenty-sixth.
Yes.
And our next council meeting is not till the third Tuesday in July?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Um, how about?
Reevaluate June twenty-first?
If we do twenty-ninth, fifth and twelfth?
And nineteenth.
And then our next common council meeting is the twenty-first, so we'll have three weeks under our belt.
Okay.
How does that sound?
That's good.
That sounds good.
So if the clerk could put this item on the, well, if you could coordinate with Christie, we'll, we'll approve it for May twenty-ninth, June fifth and June twelfth.
What about the nineteenth though?
And the nineteenth, excuse me, nineteenth, and it'll be reviewed on the twenty-first at that common council meeting.
Yes.
And the item then would be for, then would be to re, to review the application for this from June twenty-sixth through.
September fourth.
September fourth, does that sound right?
Yes.
I'll make that my motion.
Motion by the person Bailey, second by the person Acres, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, items sixteen, seventeen and eighteen, wait, did I do this right?
No, fifteen.
Fifteen, sixteen and seventeen are other outdoor special event applications for Salvation Army. The fifteenth is, number fifteen is a community room sale on June fourth. Sixteen is family fun nights on June seventeenth, eighth and twenty, June seventeenth, July eighth and August twenty-sixth. And there's an outdoor event on August nineteenth for school supply distribution. Does anybody want to take any of those separately?
No.
I entertain a motion to approve the items as presented.
Motion to approve.
Motion by the person Acres.
I will second.
Second by the person Collins. Again, the application fees are waived for the Salvation Army, they contribute much to our community. Okay, I'll call it because of the waiver of fees.
Elder Person Collins?
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey?
Aye.
Elder Person Acres?
Aye.
Elder Person Sarian?
Aye.
Okay, item eighteen is approve the outdoor special event application for St. John the Evangelist Church Festival. Glad that's coming back too, July twenty-ninth through the thirty-first. Includes all of the requisite licenses and permits as indicated.
Are they having fireworks?
I don't know.
Yeah, I believe so.
That's under discussion?
I think that's internally, they're talking about that, right?
Internally, they're talking about not having it and I think it's under discussion about not having it or even switching it from Sunday to Saturday, but I don't know, that's the last time I heard.
Okay, yeah, that's, I, so just from our perspective, we don't object to the fireworks and we would encourage them, of course, to get the permit for it, in the event that they have it on either of those days. They need to communicate that with the Police Department, Fire Department promptly and D P W because we are often involved with parking issues and all sorts of other things when they have fireworks and the festival and everything.
Okay.
Alright, whatever they're gonna do, they need to let us know.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, either way.
Yep.
Yeah.
Right?
Right, and they also talked about having a few more, or beginning, having a couple of food trucks and they asked if that would require special permits or, because everything right now is made on site.
Yeah, so, I mean, just to be clear, with regard to the outdoor events here at the House of Harley, at Jansen Fest, at the car shows, it's always assumed that food trucks and those kind of ancillary folks are permitted.
Yeah, there's a state permit, I think, for food trucks.
Food trucks have their own health department issues and stuff, as long as they have those, they can come, right?
Yeah, they just need to talk to the health department ahead of time.
Perfect.
Okay, is that good?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay, motion by the person Bailey to approve that, is there a second?
Second.
By Acres, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, items nineteen, twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two are finance committee items. One is revising job descriptions for the two recreational supervisors. Another is the twenty-twenty-two sewer service rates as included in their budget and mileage reimbursements and schedules of dispersance, entertain a motion to approve those items.
I move for approval.
Motion by the person Sarian, is there a second?
Second.
Second by the person Bailey, just quickly under discussion, I mean, we need to get a certificate of appreciation from Renee, who's going to be retiring from our Park and Rec Department after a very, very long service within the community, she'll, she will, how many?
Thirty.
Thirty, wow.
Thought that was four fingers, I can't see.
I mean, but with everybody in the city, she's done a lot to, to make the city a better place. The, the job description changes are a reflection of, of trying to make the staff as efficient as possible with the, the changes that are happening.
It's gonna be hard to replace.
Yeah.
It'd be very, very difficult to replace.
I don't think she will be replaced, I think it'll be a little different.
Exactly, okay, so the motion was made and seconded, would you call?
Elder Person Collins?
Aye.
Elder Person Bailey?
Aye.
Elder Person Acres?
Aye.
Elder Person Sarian?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Items for future agenda, I can't think of any right now, does anybody have anything?
No.
You know, reference to the sewer service rates and how that money is used at the Board of Public Works, we had a very interesting.
Yeah.
Discussion on how everything works and how the Department, Board of, Department of Public Works is in charge of all the sanitary sewer and all the work that they do, cleaning, cleaning things and responding to problems. It was very informative, what are new equipment that they use, new cameras and this council would like the presentation given to them that we had at a committee level, I could, we could ask Mr. Gudowski to, to do that.
That might be nice, I mean, it was quite an eye-opener.
So I think we record those meetings?
They do a lot of work.
So you can actually watch the video.
Sanitary sewer and storm sewer work.
They do a ton, a ton.
A ton of work.
Yeah, no, it was really.
Dedicated every day, many people every day to make sure that our sanitary sewers and our storm sewers are clear and repaired.
And not having people put posts and other things in our.
Yeah, a post went right, they found a post right through, one of our new constructions, a post went right through the.
That stuff, yeah, and it was there forever, cause somebody never looked.
No, but it was really eye-opening and actually learned.
Yeah, so just earlier, the, when we did the opening prayer, Pastor Rogers talked about keeping police officers and firefighters safe, just to let you know, this last week, our sewer camera crew was on Layton Avenue and was rear-ended by a panel truck. While they were in it, the driver fell asleep, fortunately, everybody's okay, the truck is.
Driver fell asleep?
The driver of the panel truck fell asleep and plowed into the, our truck and moved it about eighty feet.
Where, where on Layton did that happen?
Forty-third and Layton, I sent you all a picture, I thought, but maybe not.
No.
No.
Didn't I? Did I send it to you? I sent it to the president. Cause I don't want you all.
Am I allowed to send it to everyone?
Yeah, well, you can, but I just, so I don't like to have walking quorums and stuff, so I always tell the president when bad things happen, just so somebody knows, right?
We also have no parking signs up now on Loomis?
So there's a, so there's, I just wanna point that out too, so Starbucks is unloading its semi-trucks on Loomis, they were doing it last week when the left lane was closed.
Yeah, I saw that.
So there was only one lane of traffic going through, and the right lane to go on the on-ramp to eight ninety-four was blocked, which created quite a bunch of havoc. So there's a difference in the state law that relates to park, no parking signs, and there's another provision, it's no standing, stopping, or parking, which is the much, much more aggressive kinda thing, cause somebody could sit in the truck, say, I'm not parking, I'm just standing here. So we're getting those signs placed there and hopefully, as soon as we can.
The other thing is, I thought there was signs there, but I don't.
I didn't see, somebody's.
No, 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 this is something else, about those lights, I thought there was no U-turn for the traffic that's heading south on Loomis, because I see numerous cars making U-turns, and the people coming on Layton Avenue have a green arrow to turn right, and then these people have an arrow and are making U-turns when these other people have the right of way, not them necessarily.
I think you're absolutely right about that, and they, I don't know what happened to that sign, cause there used to be one there.
I did not see it there, so I need, can we investigate that, because I think that sign is very important.
Absolutely, though, that's extremely, it's extremely dangerous.
We need like two of them, one at both sides, you know?
Whatever the engineers tell us, so, yeah, that's all coordinated with the traffic lights.
Yeah, and, and, cause they get an arrow and they're making these U-turns, and these other cars have a green light, and that's not, it's asking for trouble there.
Yep.
Okay.
Waiting for it to happen.
Anything else?
Good point.
Just wanted to point out something great that happened today, twenty-seven and Layton, the gas station on Northwest Corner, the tanks are being removed, the pumps have been removed, hopefully the canopies are coming down, they're gonna clean the site, that's the gas station that's been vacant forever.
Yeah.
Encouraging staff to cooperate in any way, shape, or form they can with that, it's gonna be, it sounds like a pretty significant cleanup to that site, when they remove the tank, it smelled like gas, and the stuff underneath the, they're gonna go down a long way to clean that site.
I know some years ago, I was approached to find out who the owner of that property is, because there was somebody interested in that property, but I think the price tag on it was too high at the time, so.
So there's always been an environmental issue with that property, adjacent properties. I know the D N R. is involved in all that other stuff, and they're, it's all properly regulated, but it was nice to see that stuff coming down, cause that is truly an eyesore in the entrance to the city.
Yeah, yeah.
Was also told that this month, there'll be start, the weather has not been cooperating, but the construction north of Layton and south of eight ninety-four and the TIF, and Elder Person Collins District will begin, and that includes the Church and Chapel Office Building, and some of the, the storm sewer work is going in, there's a M M S D. program, which is creating that storm storage, water, storage.
And we have a meeting tomorrow, correct?
I, we have an immediate, another weekly meeting is at eleven, those will probably be weekly now, back to weekly, pretty soon, I'm guessing, right? Probably.
Really? Okay.
There's something else I was supposed to.
Is it the one you sent me?
What's that?
About Spring Mall?
Yeah, so Spring Mall is actively being marketed, it's my understanding that there is interest in the site, it's a, it's a very expensive site with some issues associated with it, which is why it hasn't sold for a long time. So I think that's a good thing.
And it is not Woodman's.
Brochure that was.
It is not Woodman's, it is not Target, you know?
It's not gonna be Woodman's, I can.
Or Amazon?
It's not gonna be Amazon, for sure, it's not Amazon or Woodman's.
Those are the two that I hear.
I don't know what's happening with the restaurant there, I know that they're still under lease, have no idea.
Yeah, I think their lease is up in twenty-three is what it said in the.
Yeah, but, you know, and I don't even wanna get involved in what happens or doesn't happen there.
Yeah.
There was something else that I was supposed to tell you.
Powerline Trail?
The power line, that's one of them, that wasn't the one I was thinking of, but the Powerline Trail is beginning construction on one hundred and fifth Street, it's on the western side, and that's extending all the way ultimately to.
Sixtieth?
Thirty-fifth Street. I was just contacted today by email with the business, the airport, I don't know what it, the Business Improvement District along the airport in Milwaukee, and that's east of the Powerline Trail, and they are expressing a desire to hook up to the trail and, and take it all the way to the Lake Michigan, which would be awesome. So it took us twenty years to get this far, let's see, to go any further. Oh, the other thing is, there will be some, we're working internally on the pond in Conkle Park, there's gonna be some pretty aggressive stuff potentially going on with that, you'll all be kept informed when all that stuff starts happening, it's not gonna happen during Jansen Fest, I see Julie over there, it better not happen during Jansen.
You get a fishing contest, in the future, you're gonna have fishing contests over there.
There you go.
Yeah, so, I mean, ultimately, and this'll be, this'll be marketed a little bit better when more is known, right, and where the funding and all that stuff's coming from, but the final part of Kowicki Park, which is the southwest kinda corner of it, kinda north of where the, well, it's where the new trail from the high school comes through, there's that whole area in there that we walked.
Park or Conkle Park?
Conkle, Conkle, sorry.
You're confusing me.
I'm confused as well, so that's gonna get done, and that'll finish up that part of the park, which should be nice.
It really is, it really looks like.
Another thing, last night, Scott and I, we were at the Greenfield Beautification Committee with Joan Stevens and a bunch of other folks, Mr. Radler was there as well, so before COVID hit, we, Greenfield was officially designated, after I asked, to be the official home of the knockout rose, so we'll be looking at incorporating knockout rose into our, our, our flag and our logos and all those kinds of things.
We already have it on the banners on Layton Avenue.
We do, but we, with, when COVID hit, we kinda, that wasn't like the most important thing.
No, I'm just saying they are, the banners.
Right, no, we say home of the knockout rose, but we really wanna, we really wanna highlight that, we told them that in all the, the planning plans and site plans, Dennis and Christie and Andrew are always, you know, suggesting strongly knockout roses to be part of the, so that's another cool thing, right? Also, it's my understanding that the House of Harley Davidson will not be have, will not be closing Layton Avenue this year, I mean, I think the minutes should reflect that, and I think all of you should know that, I think I passed that along to you at one point.
You did pass it along, and I appreciate it.
Yeah, so, just so, if anyone asks, they will likely be asking for parking, for motorcycle parking in the parking lane along the street, which we've managed to accommodate in the past, but Layton Avenue will not be closed. People are griping pretty significantly about the Sixtieth Street Bridge being out, including someone that I know very, very closely who works there. So they're, they're moving along well, and, but the expectation is that it, it should be hopefully open by school, right?
I thought it was November.
They have until November, but it was my understanding that they're, they're really pushing to try to get open before school, but I don't know, it could, it's, November is the contract.
I would just say November, just.
They're moving along quick, they seem to be moving along more quickly than they did on Sixty-Eighth Street, they really are, they're.
I'm, I'm hopeful, I'm not looking forward to, again.
Well, next year is gonna be worse, cause thirty-six is gonna be taken out, and that's a much hairier bridge than this one.
Plus, they're also gonna be doing the reconstruction or some replacement paving on eight ninety-four at the same time li, next year.
Yeah, so there's about a forty to fifty million dollar project, maintenance project, they're calling it, the state is gonna be doing on eight ninety-four, which includes replacing the entire median, the barrier in the middle, extending, make, enhancing the lanes somehow.
They're fixing some of those lanes that are, I mean, they're pretty bad.
You know, it's just jagged up.
It's horrible.
No, so.
But it's gonna be great when it's finished.
No, it's, no, it's not, no, it's not.
It's not, cause they won't put the walls in.
They should be recon, so originally the plan, the original plan was to reconstruct eight ninety-four, so it's like the rest of the system. When all the Foxconn stuff happened down south, a lot of the money that was dedic, was earmarked for eight ninety-four and forty-three north of the city, which is now getting done, most of that money shifted to ninety-four, the ninety-four corridor, remember, the corridor was complete, and then they opened it up and made it bigger, right? So right now, if I get my internal clock right, right around twenty-four, twenty-five, they were supposed to be reconstructing eight ninety-four, the fifty or sixty million dollars that they're talking about putting in an eight ninety-four is nothing.
It's not what it needs.
It's not at all what it needs, it's, and it's, they're talking, the.
The Band-Aid, like they were doing on Layton Avenue.
It's a Band-Aid, and they're expecting that Band-Aid to last ten or fifteen or twenty years, until they do have the resources to do it, which is just wrong. So.
Well, maybe, since nothing's happening to, with Foxconn.
They already spent, they already spent the money, the, the problem is, they have all this infrastructure in place that, so that's.
Well, we'll get Loomis, Loomis will be nice when it's done. That'll be nice.
It'll be nice, and it'll feed into an antiquated system that was built in the fifties, but that's okay. Eight ninety-four, I think, was completed in sixty-one.
At least hopefully I won't be scared when I have to stop at the lights on that bridge, cause currently I do not like having to stop at the lights while you're sitting on Loomis Bridge.
It would be a huge inconvenience to reconstruct eight ninety-four, no question about it, but when you drive there during rush, I just, like, last weekend, I was driving, eight ninety-four was all packed, right? And then you get around by the zoo in Wauwato, it opens up and everything goes well, that's what it should be there. The same, the thing that's also a little bit disturbing is the sound barriers, right, so as part of the reconstruction, the sound barriers would go in, but as part of this maintenance program, even though they're not gonna be doing anything for fifteen or twenty frickin' years, they're not putting them in, cause they don't consider that the thing to do. So I'd hoped that our legislators would support us in getting sound barriers, but all of our legislators aren't running again. Cause they're sick and tired of it, I suspect. So that's a little disappointing.
Not a little, it's a lot disappointing.
Yes, and he should, I mean, he's, I mean, people.
And he's been here for quite a few years.
But it's, it's, but every single opportunity any of you have to talk to anybody about barriers as part of the maintenance project.
Yeah, I know, we've done it, we've hammered it.
I sent a letter to the Secretary of Transportation several months ago.
Did he respond?
No, he didn't respond.
Yeah.
But we just sent a letter to him.
We need to send it like every week, maybe.
I could say all sorts of politically incorrect things right now about spending money and where it should be, but I'm not going to, all right, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
And that's at eight oh two, I didn't make the motion, who made the motion? Oh, Akers, Collins, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you all. Can I turn this off now?
Yes.